Out a little later, thank you for being here this evening. I am opening back up our regular Board of Education meeting for Washington Unified School District on August 24th, 2023. And we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Burns, can you please lead us in the pledge? Okay, thank you. That takes us to roll call. Vice President Wong.
Present.
Trustee Vanegas.
Present.
Trustee Pazati. And I too am present. Announcements of items taken in closed session. We have Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Information received. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSCA and Management. Information received. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Superintendent, 2023-2024 Goals Discussion. Information received and discussion had. That takes us to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? And can I have an approval?
I second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Vanegas, seconded by Vice President Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. Are we still doing our communications and celebrations, number one, or was that delayed?
The person that was to present had an emergency this afternoon, so she wasn't able to make it.
Okay, perfect. And it's been communicated with Brown's Construction, so they know?
Yes, I apologize. Yes, she said that they knew and they weren't able to come in the first place, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Okay. All right, then that takes us to our association report. So our first one is with CSCA, and I do not see President Gondara or a representative with him in a minute. Okay. So that takes it to you, President Up, WSTA.
Kirby Gonzalez, Vice President Wong, Clerk Coffee, trustees and Cabinet. Happy beginning of the new school year. Welcome back, WUSD. I finally have wood to knock on when I'm saying this, but it's going really well so far. So everything I'm hearing from just the rollout of the year, the vibe has been pretty good, with some small exceptions. And I want to start off on that positive note by really thanking MOT and Monique Stovall and Business Services for their really quick response on air conditioning and classroom conditions. Probably for the first time, we live in a hot place, and for the first time that I've worked here, I got a call the first day of school from Ms. Stovall, and she said, hey, I want to let you know we have some air conditioning units in HVAC that aren't up to par. We've already ordered, contracted out some portable air conditioning units, and they're being installed in classrooms. And all of the people that were complaining to me that morning weren't complaining to me in the afternoon, which is the best gift any person could ever give me. So, thank you so much, Monique, and the teachers really appreciate it. On that note, I'm hoping that we can take a deep dive on some of these units. We have some really old aging, especially air conditioning units that even outdate the schools in some cases, where they were moved in with portables, especially the portables. I think we really need to look at that. As you all know, things are just getting hotter. Hotter, I don't know if hotter is a word. It might be. Anyways, things are getting warmer, and we want to make sure that we're not having to spend our valuable resources renting units in years to come. So, but again, thank you so much for that. It was really a bright note at the beginning of the year. I wanted to talk a little bit about class size and let everybody know that I'm currently in conversations as per contract with HR regarding class sizes and distribution of students. I'm sure that you've heard, I'm sure the board members have gotten emails, and Cabinet has gotten emails, I certainly have, about unbalanced classes still. And we know that this is something that is very frustrating to teachers. We know that the language exists that allows for a maximum amount of class size, but we've been talking about ways to start the year and kind of start to solve, to even this problem out moving forward. And so I just wanted to communicate to my members in this moment and communicate to the board that we are working collaboratively with HR to look at how we can do this. There's some things I think that we have to consider for the benefit of our students. One is that students that are enrolled in a school and say are in fifth grade and have been in that school their entire career, you know, you just don't want to pull them out of a class and move them somewhere else. But it's a long haul, but one of the things that we've discussed is the possibility of telling parents that there are openings at nearby sites, and if they want to have smaller student-to-teacher ratios, that they could voluntarily move sites and kind of balance the classes. That way, in the older grades, something that we all should be thinking about right now in kindergarten and in the early grades, is trying to start balance. If we can get those classes down to 24 in kindergarten, if we can do that overflow model there, guess what? That's not a problem the next year in first grade, and then it's not a problem the next year in second grade. So really looking at the long picture, if we can't solve everything right away, and seeing if we can mitigate the issues in kindergarten. And as we all know, having 26 kids in kindergarten is kind of a big deal. As a kindergarten teacher for four years, when people say herding cats, it's not too far out there. They're beautiful, wonderful, intelligent, great little cats, but it's still herding cats, so. Community schools, I just wanted to, I wanted to just kind of make it a point that I, our members are, I have members starting to tell me that they're being asked to do different duties for community schools. And so I don't have any solid information right now. I'm going to do a survey, and of course, you know, that's going to happen. This is our community, and we want to be involved in community schools. However, I have the obligation to bargain the impacts of changes to working conditions for my members. And so I just want to make sure administrators are really thinking about if they're asking teachers, you know, traditional teachers or social workers or anybody else to do things outside of their normal working arrangement in community schools, that those are subject to bargaining? And maybe just ask administrators to think about that before they do that. Of course, management has the right to manage, and we have the right to bargain those impacts, but those impacts might be minimized if we're thinking productively early on. Last thing is an invitation to you. I didn't mean to spring this on you here, but me being disorganized, this is the first time I thought to talk to you. We, I'm so excited that we're working with the district to do an interest-based bargaining training on September 18th and September 19th. We continue to have great working relationships with HR and Business Services, and we'd like to see where that can go, and we'd like to look at IBB. And not necessarily mean that we're going to do it, but we think due diligence means that we're going to look at it and decide whether or not it's something that will work for us. And that being said, it's traditional for us, for this process to invite the school board. So if there's any of you interested in joining us on the 18th and 19th, I know I'm not giving you much notice, but look at your schedules and see, we're going to meet in CTA offices in Natomas. So you are welcome to join us there. And that's all I have for now. I will be speaking with you later, comments on P1 and P2.
Okay, thank you, President Up. We do now have our public comments. I apologize, my computer's off and this is posing up on me, so hold on, I have to get back to the password, and I will read you. Okay, our first public comment after, I'll first read a disclaimer, and then we'll invite up Nan, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, please correct me, but Nan Gio Danego. Thank you. Okay, let me read the public comment, and then you can come on up. So our disclaimer is that our regular board meeting held on February 9, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during the meeting. They do get added to the record, though, and we had one that was sent to us today. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know that the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum. Two items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in public board meetings, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, creating more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, please welcome, and you have three minutes after you come to the podium. Boy. Okay. And you can, before we start, you can also lower that if you would like to, to be more comfortable.
This button.
Uh huh.
Good evening. My name, my name is Nan Jordan Ango. I'm the health aide at Westfield School. I sent you all an email, and the only person that responded was Superintendent Hildreth, and I appreciate that. Dear Superintendent Hildreth and Board of Trustees, last year, 2022-23, the health aides worked eight hours a day. This was a temporary contract. This year, we are back to six hours a day. This is very disheartening. Not only do we see students throughout the day, we are responsible for healthcare plans, communicating with staff and parents, and assisting the school nurses needed. There is plenty of work to keep us busy for eight hours a day. As you know, the beginning of the school year is extremely busy. It was hard walking away from work projects, this was last week, that I was unable to complete. I am asking that you consider making health aides full-time employees. We are able to better serve our families working full-time. Not all parents and guardians are available to talk during school hours. There are also children still on campus when we leave that are waiting for the bus or at after-school services. This would also allow us to complete documentation and other paperwork. Working a six-hour day is also a financial hardship. When I started working for the district in 2018, I was hired as a six-hour employee, but my insurance was covered. I was offered a job at Twin Cities School District, but I chose Washington Unified School District because the benefits were better. I am now paying approximately $200 a month for insurance. Last year, I was making more money and not having to pay for insurance. Now I am working less hours and paying for insurance. This is not a living wage. If I wasn't married, I could not afford to live by myself and pay the bills. I am not asking for a huge raise, I just want to work more hours and have benefits. Many classified employees are dedicated and working in the district for the long haul. I truly like the students and staff that I work with, and I would love to stay in the Washington Unified School District until I retire. I am requesting you reconsider and adjust the position of health aides to full-time. Please value and appreciate our services respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and for sharing your letter, both through email and this evening. And thank you for all you do for our kids. Okay, I do not see another public, sorry, this keeps freezing on me.
No, I'm sorry. No other public comment requests.
All right, thank you. So we do not have a public hearing this evening, and we also do not have information or discussion items this evening. So that takes us right to our consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? May I have an approval?
I move.
Okay.
A second.
All right. Made by Vice President Wong, seconded by Trustee Vanegas, all in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. That takes us to action. Item number one, approval of Washington Unified School District's response to the following. 2022-2023 Yolo County Grand Jury Report. Are we there yet? On the road to school safety. Dr. Hildreth, our superintendent.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask Dr. Burns and Ms. Streep to come and share the information. As we know, we received a report from the grand jury in June that was released to the public, and it is the district's requirement to submit a response within 90 days. And so we have been communicating with the grand jury, and they have asked that we submit our response by September 8.
Good afternoon, President Kirby Gonzalez and Superintendent Hildreth and all the other trustees. Dr. Burns and I, with Dr. Hildreth's input and guidance, we've been working on responding to the 2223 Grand Jury Report, and we had findings and recommendations to respond to, one for Yolo County and then one for the district as a whole. And so tonight, we're going to start with the one that's specific to the district. And I'm not quite sure how you guys want us to go through it. Do you want us to just go finding by finding in our response to the finding, or how do you want us to proceed?
We, just as a FYI, I did have the opportunity to send it to all trustees earlier, and based on the feedback that you have shared thus far, we were able to make some modifications. And so the recommendation might be that we read our response to each finding, because we know that we have made some modifications from what you received at the beginning of the week, because the findings from the grand jury have not changed, but it's really the focus of our response to that.
Perfect. And I'm wondering if it's possible, and you might not remember all the pieces, but based on the questions asked, since I don't know what my colleagues ask, they don't know what the, if you know that something changed from the original to this, it might be helpful to call, to call that out. Unfortunately, my computer is not working this evening, so I'm having a with that, but thank you.
No problem. So we'll go ahead and start with finding F1, and our response to that is we agree to the finding, and that we are planning to do some assessments that will guide our work around increasing our hardening measures.
Was there any changes to that?
No changes to that section.
Yeah. Okay, finding two is about each school district conducting California Healthy Kids surveys, right? So if you look at this, we agree with the finding, okay? And the key to this was that the first sentence, and I believe that was a minor change, the district has implemented a social emotional screener to be completed in grades three through 12 twice a year. The implementation began in February 2022. Okay, and then the key to this change is at the end, in the last two sentences, "Our SEL coordinator and the director of special programs and student services are committed to overseeing and administrating the assessments. Efforts will include communicating the importance of completing each assessment and how the data informs best practices support student."
And I would just add that that section was really about us increasing our, the number of students who are responding to those assessments. And so we're planning to increase our effort to make sure our participation rate is higher. Next, we'll go on to finding F3, and this one was, let's see. This one was about us increasing, making sure that visitors to our campuses can clearly and easily define where the main office is, so that they can enter our campuses by way of the main office and sign in as a visitor. And so our response to that, we agree with the finding, and we're committed to increasing signage visibility before the start of the 2425 school year to denote school office locations, and we are committed to implementing this change to ensure the safety and security of all of our schools. Finding F4.
So finding F4 has to do with training, right? Training related to violent threats such as active shooter. Okay, so the key here, the district agrees with this finding, and then the key part, I'm trying to look if we've had any changes since you last read it.
Making sure that training's both online and.
Right. So we change it here, here's the change, "The district has identified the need for yearly web-based and in-person training." That's the key. And in-person training. That was the key. On active shooter, violent events, and has collaborated with the West Sacramento Police Department to facilitate in-person active shooter, in parentheses, run, hide, fight training.
What is it saying? Maybe I'm reading it.
Right above, on page two, right above finding F5.
Mine's on, oh, you're looking different. Yeah, it looks different on.
I'm sorry, the page.
Yeah, it looks different online.
So we're looking at the Fs, not the Rs.
We haven't got the recommendations yet. We'll do that after, the last two findings. Any questions? Or recommendations?
Okay, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Um, next is finding F5, and this one really has to do with, are we giving our staff an opportunity to give us feedback on the safety trainings that we're providing to them and requiring them to participate? We already had some more informal ways of gathering their feedback, but the recommendation is to really formalize it, and we agree that assessment surveys can help us serve our staff better.
The finding F6, it goes back to the web-based third-party provider to notify parents, caregivers, right? So the goal is, we want 90% or more be receiving those phone calls. We want to make sure, so we agree with this finding, and we continue to communicate the importance of having up-to-date parent caregiver contact information on file.
So I guess my question is, how do, how do we increase our, from where we are now, which is probably about 20% less than what the goal is? How do we get to 20? I mean, we can encourage people all we want, really not, not going to make the needle move measure. So what's our act?
So we have an action plan in place. One of the things we're working with the secretaries is, amazing Christie Jordan called it the Kaiser method, and whenever you call Kaiser Permanente, they check your contact information. Is it up to date? So every secretary, anybody who reaches out, when we take a phone call from a parent, myself included, I just ask them, I want to check that your contact information is up to date. The other thing we're doing is we're working with the amazing Yorgos Kazanis, who, I think he's going to turn the arrow up for us. We're going to work with the amazing Yorgos Kazanis on a data confirmation campaign, which is out already. So part of that data confirmation, and we've decided that we're going to do data confirmation about three times in a year. So you know when you log into Aries and it pops up and asks you to check your contact information? We're not going to do that once a year, when I can do it twice, we're going to do it three times throughout the year. All students, all students. Right? And we want to make sure that parents, but that's one of the things, right? One of the things we're asking back to school night to, remind your parents how important it is for us to have their contact information.
Okay, from there, we'll move into the recommendations, our responses to the recommendations. So recommendation R1, the grand jury recommends that prior to the start of the 2425 school year, that each school district in the county identify additional hardening approaches and develop a plan to further protect areas of its schools that remain vulnerable. The recommendation has not been implemented, however, this will be implemented no later than June 30th, 2024. In March 2023, in collaboration with the West Sacramento Police Department, WUSD provided school vulnerability assessment training to all school administrators. The district is working with the West Sac Police Department, our MOT department, and transportation, and we're also looking into securing the services or enlisting the services of an independent safety consultant to assess our campuses for site safety vulnerability, and that, the results of that assessment will determine additional hardening approaches that we need to implement.
And in terms of what was added, it was that portion about the independent safety consultant, because earlier we had just mentioned West Sac PD and MOT, and we knew that was going to happen, but we hadn't put it in the, in the response. So we added that layer of information. And then we also added in the format, after making sure we were following the guidelines of the grand jury, you'll notice that the recommendation, the sentence starter, is the sentence starter that the grand jury asked us to use for each of the recommendations. Either it has been implemented, it has not, partially, so we went back to make sure the format was in the way it was going to be accepted without needing to send it back.
And I have one on this, if you, I think it might be helpful since we're going point by point, if anyone wants to chime in here, do you have one?
Go ahead and I'll follow up.
Okay, I appreciate you adding that part. I think it's really important, and I appreciate that. I understand that this document, the response to grand jury, is different than now the district plan, that's going to be really hashed out of how do we do these things? And so I just want to make the comment that I know school safety for all of us is incredibly important. We send our kids to school every single day with the trust that they are going to be safe at school, and I know it's our top commitment and priority. This is a different grand jury report than we received in the past, which was very glowing, it was a very positive report of us, so we take this very seriously, and I appreciate all the work you do. So I just want to make the statement that while this will say June 30th, 2024, by that time, that as a district, I'd like to hold us accountable that we will do that much sooner, that this becomes a priority in the district to have all of our sites assessed in this way, so that we can see any immediate needs then. Okay. Oh, do you have anyone on that?
Yeah, so the only thing that I wanted to add to this, when we say assessment and training, one of the conversations that I have with superintendent was about drills when kids are out of class, so that we're not just watching a video or, or, you know, reading pamphlet or reading something, actually having the opportunity to walk through something when we have no kids in the classroom. So we, you know, as the adult, know what we're doing, right? Have the experts guide us through the process of how to do that. I think that definitely hardens the campus and preparedness. So I just want to make sure that we institute that.
Thank you.
No, you're spot on. Last time we had to consult and out, in 2018, we did tabletops. No, you're spot on. Uh, last time we had to consult and out in two thousand and eighteen, we did tabletop scenarios. Discussions and we collaborated with PD and FIRE. And, uh, just to give you a little background, I met with PD with the deputy chief and three lieutenants the other day to discuss a lot of these things too.
I, I wasn't talking about tabletop. I was actually happy about people in classes and then all of a sudden alarm goes old.
Yep.
Not students, no.
The adults, correct. Yeah. Recommendation, recommendation R two talks about having SMART goals, right? To encourage all students to complete the California Healthy Kids Survey and similar surveys. And the key is the recommendation has been implemented, okay? We, the district annually completes the California Healthy Kids Survey for grades three through twelve. In addition, the district administers a social emotional screener twice a year to students in grades three through twelve. The last couple of years we used PASS. Now we're switching over to Kelvin SEL screener. And the key to this is the survey results and screeners are used to set goals and measurable actions as steps to support student needs and decrease potentially violent actions. On August fourth, here's the new part, on August fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Administrators were notified that the California Healthy Kids Survey and SEL screener will be administered this year. Just as in the past school years. In the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we are increasing our efforts to ensure all students can participate in both assessments.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, will you remind us if we, if we need parent permission slip for both of those screeners?
We will put out a newsletter, uh, like we've done in the past with the PASS, and then we do the active consent versus, you know, where everybody, so we'll put out emails. We have a template. We're going to notify the parents. California Healthy Kids. So yes, we put out the letter, we notify, we do, uh, phone calls, we do everything, newsletters. Same thing for the SEL screener as well. You're correct. Yeah.
President, uh, President Kirby Gonzalez, I think there was a bit of confusion because what's being pulled offline is the old draft and not the amended. So that's why, so I know right now, um, Mario's probably working on putting up on the screen the amended. So that's why you're getting some questions that are repetitive because we're actually looking at the old draft. Um, though President Kirby Gonzalez has the paper copy, which this time it worked for you versus not being online.
True, today the paper was great.
Today's paper was great.
And so for members of the public, we will get that updated as well, um, for them. So when they look through these notes. Thank you.
Um, recommendation R three. Um, prior to the start of the twenty four, twenty five school year, each school district should evaluate and improve signage for all of its schools so that visitors can easily find the school's office to register upon their arrival. Um, the recommendation has been implemented on, um, August fourth, administrators were notified to review the signage on their campuses. Directing visitors to the main office. School administrators must submit work orders for appropriate signage based on their review results. The district is committed to increasing signage visibility before the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. To denote the office's location and we are committed to implementing this change to ensure the safety and security of all of our schools. Okay, R five.
One thing to note, and Noah's mentioned, when this came out, this is all the districts in the Yolo County region as well are named in this. So this one is that we're going to identify and document a statistically reliable method or tool for measuring the effectiveness of school safety training, including an annual survey of teachers, staff and administrators. The recommendation has not been implemented. This will be implemented no later than June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Following the district's review and development of a survey process to evaluate the effectiveness of safety training.
I think we need, we did not go for recommendation four.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about. Um, recommendation R four, prior to the start of the twenty four, twenty five school year. Each school district should require and document that training related to threats of violence is completed by its teachers, regular and substitute staff and administrators every year. Um, this recommendation has not been implemented. This will be implemented no later than November first, twenty twenty-three. Safety training, including all those related to threats of violence, will be provided to teachers, regular and substitute staff and administrators yearly. Multiple opportunities for training will be available throughout the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and attendance, um, at those trainings will be monitored.
Thank you for putting the date in there. Then one of my questions on this was when, when would it be implemented? Um, so the only thing that I'm looking for is on November first, will you report back to us saying that it's done?
Okay, absolutely. And then lastly, we.
The board requests every time you put in a date to report back to us that it's done.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I might say given this time that it, if we can have this conversation, um, but we can't because of the Baron Act, but we can discuss the agenda. Um, Dr. Hildreth and I, as we think about strategically that there can be an update to this. You know, by that date, it could be in superintendent comments possibly, and then there could be an update in the board meeting. Um, at a certain point might be the most efficient way to do it.
Just an email.
Sure.
Um, so the last one recommendation for the district is recommendation R six. Prior to the start of the twenty four, twenty five school year and each subsequent school year.
Five?
And my, uh, we, I think we. Dr. Burns already read it.
We did our five, yeah. We went back to four and now we're going to six. Sorry about that.
My numbers.
Um, prior to the start of the twenty four, twenty five school year and each subsequent school year, each district should achieve and maintain an emergency notification contact rate of at least ninety-five percent with parents or guardians as verified by their third-party emergency notification providers. Um, this recommendation has not been implemented. This will be implemented no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Before starting the twenty four, twenty five school year, the district will strive to achieve and maintain an emergency notification rate of at least ninety-five percent.
Okay, yes.
Uh, um, how do we come up with a ninety-five percent? So why, why not ninety? Why not a hundred? Why not?
It was the recommendation of the grand jury, yes.
My, my question is going to be the same as it was on the other one is that how? You know, I know your answer was the same when we hit that. Um, that's even a higher threshold than the ninety percent, so. I think it's a tall ask. Um, and for us to say that it's going to be, I'm glad you put strive. Because I'm not sure anybody's going to achieve it. The, the districts in Yolo County will be able to achieve that. Of and on them, what are they? Can we reach out to them?
Can I make a recommendation? Um, possibly when you guys or when teachers have their, um, parent teacher conferences? That's a great time to, they are there with their student. Having to meet. Make sure that that information is updated because I remember being a kindergarten mom, a first grade mom and never ever looking at Ares. So. Face to face.
That's a great recommendation and, um, we know that, that back to school night window will, not back to school night, but the parent conference window will approach us fast. So that's definitely something we'll implement.
I was like having Ares up for that parent just so that they can go ahead and take care of it right then and there. Might help you.
That's true. You do not log into Ares when you have a little tiny one. I mean, not really until grade. Yeah, I agree. I agree. That's a good recommendation. Are there any other comments? Okay, so just to reiterate, one, thank you for this. I know it was a process to read it through, but I think it's important. So thank you for that. Um, so our commitment is, um, we'll take a vote in just a minute, but I assume that we're good to go ahead with this. Um, but that we will have in, um, any dates that are here that we'll, we'll get an update in our superintendent update. But then we can talk, um, Dr. Hildreth and I about, um, possibly a mid-year update on both reports maybe. Since as we spoke earlier, some of these have a date for say the end of the year, but we want to act with urgency to do sooner. So I think an update, uh, maybe mid-year would be important. Does that sound good with everyone? Okay, so then can I get a motion to approve this? Okay, all right. Move by Vice President Wong, second by Trustee Pazadi, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you get to say up because now we have our approval of the Washington Unified School District response to the following twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Yolo County Grand Jury Report, Safety is in the Eye of the Beholder, Concerns About Yolo High School and I'll give it. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. My computer doesn't work. I, I need to go back to public comments and ask if we have any. My, my screen keeps going black and so I don't have any. I apologize for that. So feel free to interrupt me. Um.
I didn't want to just.
No, you can. You can scream when it comes about. Is this, I need to reiterate because we took a vote. Was this a public comment on the last agenda item?
Um, there was.
On P one.
On both.
P one, just P one and P two, yes.
Okay, I really apologize. It's truly this. So, um.
It's okay because it actually, some of it was resolved. I didn't see the newer language. Um, I was referring to what was posted on the agenda. So, um, uh, basically I wanted to say that on, um, P one, F two. Um, you guys resolved my concerns, which was talking about the percentage of students completing the Healthy Kids Survey. That, that's really critical, right? Because, you know, it doesn't matter if the, the ones that we need to hear from aren't responding. Um, I also just want to say, just unordered, like WSTA a couple of years ago approached the, I don't know if you remember, approached the board, approached the superintendent um, regarding the need of teachers to be, um, trained on active shootings. And so I'm really glad that we're doing this, but this is an opportunity for me to say to you, please listen to community partners. Because we shouldn't have to hear from the grand jury when one of our own is saying it to us. So I'm super happy, but I'm a little frustrated that we could have resolved this two years ago and in, in that time you've all these happened and all these other things have happened. So shame.
Okay, thank you, President Nept, and apologies again, um, for the order. So that takes us, um, back to action item two, and I'll have Dr. Hildreth introduce this item as well.
Thank you. We also had a grand jury report that provided some findings and recommendations specific to, uh, Yolo High School or Yolo Education Center. And so we would like to have Dr. Burns and Assistant Superintendent Street come up and share our response to the findings and the recommendations regarding Yolo.
Perfect. And I might suggest, although I appreciate you reading all the pieces, but that instead of response to findings, we read the, you can just maybe read the response recommendations. Of what we'll do. Does that sound okay with everyone? Okay.
I'm wondering from partners whether or not we can share it on the big screen so they follow us?
Yeah.
We're having a technical, I'm not sure if it's possible.
Multiple.
It's been a technical night, and I don't know.
That was not intentional. I just, sometimes it's just a matter of tapping the computer, I'm sure.
So just so that we're clear, you want us to just do the responses for the recommendation? Okay, so Dr. Burns will start with recommendation R one.
Okay, recommendation R one. Was a concern that, uh, the district expectations, consequences for having weapons prohibition against and consequence of having weapons on Yolo Education Center grounds was not in the Yolo High School handbook. It's in the district handbook. It's in the district behavior expectations. The recommendation has not been implemented. However, it will be implemented as of September one, two thousand and twenty-three. Yolo High School updated student handbook to align with the behavior expectations listed in the WSD Student Behavioral Expectations Handbook.
Okay, um, recommendation R two. By January first, twenty twenty-four, WUSD should develop a plan to improve the process by which teachers and administrators are promptly notified of student suspensions from the campus. Um, the recommendation has been implemented on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Administrators and teachers were notified that behavior alert emails would be sent this year, just as in previous school years. Um, using a web-based program, all teachers are notified of suspensions through behavior alert emails. Administrators and teachers are to review the behavior alert notifications process annually. In addition to the notification process, the principal of Yolo High School will notify teachers by email when students are suspended.
Recommendation, recommendation number three. Has to do initiate, should initiate an audit of investigations involving violence and bullying conducted by Yolo High School leadership between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-three. Using independent experts in order to identify any investigations found to be incomplete or improperly concluded. Then take remedial action. In addition, the district should review the investigations training completed by school administration to evaluate its effectiveness and seek opportunities for improvement. The findings and outcomes this review should be shared with the grand jury. This recommendation has not been implemented to date. By December one, two thousand and twenty-three, the district will enlist an independent expert's support to review school-level investigations involving violence and bullying between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-three for Yolo High School. Changes or modifications to the investigative, to investigatory process utilized by Yolo High School leadership will be based on the audit results. In addition, the district will review the discipline investigations regularly to determine areas of strength and opportunities for improvement.
Yeah, I'll share this. So, um, unless it's a part of this, but it's on process, I'll. Um, so on process, thank you. Um, I had said that we could move to the response, um, to recommendations, but given the technology issues tonight and a few other things. Um, and since some of these we disagree with, um, we're going to ask you to go back to response to findings. Um, if you don't mind going through that as well, we'll make sure that the full public can hear it and then see it on this screen.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, so finding F one. Um, similar to the first recommendation. Unlike the district's Student Behavioral Expectations Handbook, the Yolo High School Student Handbook does not mention prohibitions against and consequences of having weapons such as guns or knives on school grounds during school hours despite incidents involving knives continuing to occur. Not including such discussion might prevent Yolo High School students from fully understanding the seriousness of bringing such items onto school grounds. The district agrees with this finding. The principal will include the WUSD Student Behavioral Expectations in the Yolo High School Student Handbook on or before Friday, September first, twenty twenty-three. Okay, F two.
Okay, finding two, teachers and administrators are not notified of student suspensions as they occur. This increases the chances that a suspended student could return to school before allowed. Possibly with intent and the means to harm others or property. The district disagrees with this finding. All teachers, including Yolo High School teachers, receive behavior alert emails when a student on their roster is suspended from school.
And that as a start of school.
That's been, I, I can't recollect how long we've had behavior alerts, but it's been as long as I've been in the district for the past six years.
Okay, finding F three. Which is second to last.
I'm sorry. It just begs the finding why they found it to be not. It's just curious. It's a curious finding.
But when we get to recommendations, we're, you're going to see, we're going to make changes regardless.
And, and I think that was in the recommend, in our recommendations and, and as we were having this conversation. Although the behavior alert system has been a process for a while. Our goal was how, if, if that was a, a finding that meant somehow, somewhere that alert system may not have been working for someone. So by asking the principal to, uh, email the staff when a student has been suspended, we just put that as in another layer of notification.
Thank you for that. That was the clarification. We, we went to the recommendations first. I know. I know that was a recommendation, but it was why important the findings and why we disagreed.
So finding F3, investigations of incidents of threats or acts of violence are not as thorough or considered, um, as needed. The district partially agrees with this finding. The district continues to provide numerous training opportunities for school administrators on the investigation process throughout the year. In addition, the Director of Special Programs and Student Services collaborates with school administrators to investigate threats or acts of violence. The district collaborates with the West Sacramento Police Department for threats or acts of violence as needed, and that was an addition. We, we do that, but we, we hadn't called it out in this response. So thank you for that feedback. And then, um, Jay, you want to do finding F4?
A significant percentage of Yolo High School students are in what is commonly known as independent study at any given time, thereby unable to attend classes or events on campus. This isolation prevents them from receiving the full benefit of services provided to attending, to attending students. The district disagrees with this finding, and analysis of enrollment in the independent study program at Yolo High School does not demonstrate that a significant percentage of students were enrolled. At a minimum, 90% of Yolo High School students were enrolled in in-person instruction daily.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go on process this time and I'll do our public comments in the right order. And I, um, just want to reiterate that I'm seeing this correctly, that I only, I see President, uh, Nepp, but I do not see others. Is that correct? Okay. So President Nepp, welcome up.
I just want to clarify, this isn't technically a public comment, it's an association comment. So there's a, on process, there's a difference between that. Um, as you know, Don Stoffer used to do these way more than me, and I'm trying to be better about it, but, um, there shouldn't be a timer on association comment. That being said, I don't plan to talk your route. But I did want to ask, so the, the one question on F2, um, where the district disagreed with the finding and I, my understanding is that teachers of record are notified for students on their roster, they're suspended, but the staff as a whole is not recommend, uh, is not notified. And if we're concerned about threats of violence or returned, it seems like the entire staff should know because that kid who's not supposed to be there probably isn't going back to the class that they're supposed to be in at that time because that, you know, our kids are smarter than that. Um, F3, with the district's partial agreement on investigations of threats and acts of violence, I would just say, um, I will not say the names or, or any of the investigations I was in, the, the parties that were involved, but I was involved in, in many issues last year with students, well, not many, but a couple incidents with students who were threatening and students who, there was a perception that they had weapons. Um, and I will say that I witnessed a lack of, um, scrutiny in those investigations. Um, I, I saw teachers were not taken seriously when they saw students with weapons, even when there was evidence in the classroom of cuts and slashes. Um, students weren't searched, students were released home. Some of these students, some of the members, maybe not the students that committed it, but students that were aggressive in the room, that participated in the incident, um, later on were either charged or reported to have committed acts of violence in the community, not in the school. Um, and so I take this one very seriously and I think if the, how can the district partially agree or with, um, the, with the, uh, grand jury's report where the report says that they find, they find kind of, the, the grand jury is kind of, there's a partial problem there. I can't remember the exact wording on the top, it's on front of me, but, um, so there's two partial things there. And it seems to me, if we're not doing the job on threats of violence and weapons, we're not doing the job. There's no halfway there. You can't partially agree. If we're doing something wrong, it's wrong. Um, so that would be my comment on that. And then the last comment is on, um, the students in independent study. Um, obviously with the letter of the law, 90% is where you have to be. I think we would want more for, um, our at-risk students than 90%. Um, the other concern that's been expressed to me, and this is not in the grand jury, but I think it's, you know, for the, um, for the information of the board, is that the concern that staff has at Yolo in particular is that a lot of the students that are on independent study are actually students that have decided they feel safer to be home working because students who are a threat, um, they don't feel like there's options for them. They don't feel like those threats are being taken care of. And obviously, I'm not saying students should be removed from campus, but some of our students who are not causing any issues, behavioral issues are going, according to teachers, are going on independent studies so they don't have to be there. Um, and to me, that's a whole other can of worms, right? Um, because we're creating an environment where students want to learn and can't learn.
Thank you, President Nepp. You were exactly three minutes. Maybe, uh, though on process, uh, let's talk as well, um, so that we make sure our bylaws and others talk about public comment and give a specific definition so we can talk to make sure we're on the same page as well about association time. Okay. Um, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate those comments. Are there any comments now from the board?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the time that I had, uh, talked with Dr. Hildreth about this. I can remember some of the incidents specifically that evoked some of these findings. Um, you know, you know, some of the, I, I, ideas were, were hardening of the facilities and one of the issues was Yolo High School, um, where two kids came on campus and beat up a student, right? And so there definitely does need to be some sort of hardening of, of our facilities that need to have collaboration with, with SacPD, that need to have a single point of entry that, you know, is guarded, right? Like, there's got to be a way that people filter through the office, right? And there, there just can't be open spaces to get in and out, and that means maybe pushgates and things like that, actually investing into, um, you know, the physical garden of a facility. So I appreciate this and I'm hoping that we continue these discussions because there's more that can be done. Because I, to be honest, I, you know, I, I don't like seeing all these findings and recommendations when we were once, like, held up by the grand jury as this is what you need to do. And Washington Unified was at one point. Um, since I've been on the board and Vice President Wong and, and President Kirby Gonzalez, um, we were, we were here when it was, uh, issued and all the other districts were told, model this. So let's get back to that. And that's kind of where I think we should be.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Um, I'll share, um, the same comments then as last time on process that we will have any dates here that we'll get an update on, uh, but when we do a review mid-year, that it is both of the grand jury, uh, findings, so we have an update on what progress we're making. Um, I appreciated hearing, um, oops, looks like I'm setting timers for myself, too. Um, I appreciated, um, hearing the, um, perspective of teachers as well who are at the school sites. And I noticed in the other response to grand jury, it did talk about, um, the surveys of staff, including others, families and students. And so, um, that was for the whole district and I want to make sure, um, of course, it's insinuated in that, that Yolo High School is part of that. And so that we're making sure that we're capturing the surveys of the teachers, the families, the staff, class, um, certificated, classified as well, um, into, um, as we work on these recommendations and hearing their input, um, to ensure, um, the safety of all and those who go to independent study. Okay?
And I just also want to note, um, to make sure that trustees know that, um, Dr. Burns and Ms. Street have, uh, made sure that our new principal of Yolo is aware that there was a grand jury report about Yolo High School and what the, the findings and recommendations were so that as he starts his, um, first year there, that he is aware of concerns from the past and, um, he will be able to monitor and then also let us know if there's any type of support that he needs.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve to send, um, the response letter as is?
I move.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Pazadi, seconded by Vice President Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. And thank you both for all of your work. We know that your commitment to student safety is at the top and, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
We now have approval of the consolidated application, 2023 to 24, um, application for funding, and that is with Stephanie Groot, our Director of Compliance and Accountability. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to go up just a little. Uh, good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, board members, superintendent, audience members. This evening, we are requesting your approval of the 23-24 Consolidated Application for Funding. This application demonstrates the district's participation in Title I, Part A, Basic Grant; Title II, Supportive Effective Instruction; Title III, English Learners; Title III, Immigrant; Title IV, Student Support. These are the federally funded titles that we meet eligibility for. All the assurances have been completed. As you note, we did meet eligibility for, sorry, for immigrant funding. The numbers are reported in C-beds. Um, in 2022, we had 245. Previously in 2021, it was 168. So we are requesting your approval of this.
All right. Are there any comments? Um, I see no public comments. Thank you. Are there any board comments? Nope. Okay. Then can I have a?
I want the money.
Yeah. Good. All right. Is that a motion?
I'll take federal dollars.
Thank you. I move. I move to take federal dollars. Yes. Vice President Wong.
I second.
Seconded by Clerk Coffey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so that now takes us to board governance. And we have the nomination of the California School Board Association, CSBA, African-American Director-at-Large, Vice President Wong.
Well, thank you for putting this on the agenda. As you know, Chris Clark is your board member where you teach. He's currently the incumbent of the African-American at-large for CSBA, and I'd like us to consider to nominate him for a full term. He was actually appointed, recommended by me and a couple of our, um, six, Region Six delegates to be, to fill the vacant role. Uh, President Markarian appointed him and now he's running for the full term. So I'd like to nominate him and I'm assuming he's a great board member, one of, in Folsom, Cordova. And so, um, just a, a stand-up, really just phenomenal human. Um, he worked for the Urban League, really cares about community and represents, um, African-American student population, but I would say also pan-ethnic, um, issues very well.
And I will share, um, yes, I work with him in my other capacity and he is a champion in Rancho Cordova, um, for the students there. He's a visible presence. I was just with him last week, um, and he is a huge advocate for the students who, um, are not always, um, highlighted in the board meetings. He makes sure that they're always talked about. And he is, um, I agree, he is a, uh, fantastic, uh, representative of Rancho Cordova. That is his area. They're now by districts as well, and I would be happy to, um, also second. But is there any discussion on that? Okay. And that's officially due ours.
Okay. I move.
Okay. And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you for bringing that forward. Okay. Before eight o'clock, my husband will not believe me. All right. Uh, the board and superintendent comments, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you. And to make sure I'm not the reason we don't get out by eight o'clock, I'm going to keep my, uh, remarks brief. Uh, I really just want to thank everyone for a great, uh, opening week of school. It really was, uh, all hands on deck of trying to think of everything that we might need to be able to support. Thank you, President Nepp, for recognizing what we were trying to do, knowing that, uh, it was going to be very hot and how we all feel, uh, when it's very hot, let alone adults with classrooms full of children. So it was, do we have air? Do we have extra water on hand? We didn't want lines at water fountains. So we just, we're trying to think of everything we could and just grateful again to HR and Business Services, MOT, facilities for, uh, getting all of that done. Um, it's really hard to believe that we're like back in school, summer's over, um, but, um, just a thank you to everyone. So we're excited now that school has started. We are kicking off with back-to-school night. So we had back-to-school night last night at River City and at Yolo High School, and tonight we have back-to-school night at Washington Middle College. Um, and then next week, next Wednesday, we have our back-to-school nights at most of our K8 schools. So we're up and running. We want parents to know all the great things that are happening in classrooms and the activities that they can look forward to. As always, I had the privilege of addressing all of our employees at our district kickoff on, uh, Monday, the 14th and Tuesday, the 15th. Um, everyone was just, it, it, it's just such good energy. You know, you don't really get a lot of time to see the entire district in one place and, um, appreciate again our WSTA and CSEA partners for willingness to try something new, trying to flip the, the time, and it seems as if that worked out well in terms of staff really being able to have those morning hours to really focus on being prepared. So it is always about following traditions, but thinking about how do we pivot to make things even better? Thank you to Vice President Wong for being able to attend on behalf of the board, but just know we did have a picture of all of you all on a slide because we recognize that we have new employees and we wanted to make sure that they were aware of not only the faces of, of district staff, but also the board who sets direction. So if you see a stranger in the store who knows you, that might be why. Um, I want to just recognize that as we get ready to start September, next Friday, September 1st, we have several important observances, observances, um, in September. So of course we have Labor Day on September 4th. Uh, September is also National Suicide Prevention Month, so we're going to be, um, having resources, um, just reminding our, our families and our students that there are other options and supports, um, if they are having some serious, uh, mental health crises. It's also National Hispanic Heritage Month, starting on September 15th, and it's National Attendance Awareness. I can't even speak for a variety of reasons. So, um, it is National Attendance Awareness Month, and, um, it really is showing how important attendance is. That is one of our district priorities, along with safety, high-quality instruction, parent and community engagement, and of course, community schools. But we know that student success is directly linked to attendance and our teachers, our school staff, our leaders, we all are empowered to remove systemic barriers facing our most disadvantaged students by providing that world-class education that considers cultural differences and puts the needs of individual students first. So I have a call to action for our entire school community to join us, helping us build a habit of good attendance for everyone, encouraging not only all of our students to be in schools every day on time, but we're asking staff to be in school every day on time because we are the role models for our kids. And if we're taking the time to ask parents, um, to get their school, their children to school on time, we want to make sure that they know that adult is going to be there to greet them every day. So, um, know that we're going to be spending conversations on attendance and we're going to start that campaign in September with National Attendance Awareness Month. And with that, I will turn it over to the board.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, Trustee Pazadi, are you ready?
So I just want to say congratulations to everybody who had to work so hard, uh, to get opening. opening day off and running. I can't imagine what the lead-up was like, especially after coming off of vacation, especially for teachers and classified staff. They've come off of a nice little break and they're a little unwound. And then all of a sudden, that anxiety builds back up for opening day. We got kids coming back into the classrooms and what's it going to be like again? Because it's new every single year, right? So congratulations to making it a success. I was able to go to Bridgeway, Westfield, Westmore Oaks for their opening morning, which was bouncing from one to the other to the other in relatively quick. And I didn't get to spend as much time as I would have liked, but I was able to see some of, some of the, you know, drop-off as it happened. And so I was really impressed with everything. So, and Westfield is now at Old Westmore. So that was interesting. And there is a bus stop at Old Westfield where they're bussing kids into Old Westmore. So it was, it was definitely something that I was really impressed by and the planning that went into that. So I'm just grateful. So thank you. We had a facility subcommittee meeting, I don't remember, 14th, 15th? 14th? And you're gonna have to help me with this because I, we had an update on Measure V and Measure Z, an update on Westfield and an update on RFP for Elkhorn, correct? Okay, got that. And a small, brief update about the district. So nothing was determined, it was just more discussion and kind of guidance. But one was the RFP for Elkhorn, would we consider modular development? And after the discussion, we kind of gave guidance that no, that's not the direction that we would be interested in heading as manufacturing off-site would effectively get around paying prevailing wage, which kind of n runs what a PLA is about. So we would just mainly want to stick to the agreements that we're going to be doing in our PLA and, you know, stick with a brick and mortar or stick-built facility. So I think that's kind of the agreement that we came to. And that's about it, right? I think that's about it. So I think that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Vanegas.
Yes. I don't want to disappoint anybody. So yeah, trustee Pizzotti talked about the subcommittee meeting. So I'll just keep it short and say gracias at the beginning of the school year and buenas noches. It's some sleep. Some rest.
Okay. Clerk Coffee.
Sorry, you won't be leaving at eight. So first off, yes, it was great. First day back to school, went to Riverbank. It was great to see all the leadership kids, you know, with their palms and horns and saying welcome, big old signs, kids getting dropped off, the balloon arches, people taking pictures. Got a few pictures, nice stuff. Yeah, that's right. And then you can see the chaos after they drop off the kids. I actually stood around and there was so much commotion going on in the office where I got pulled aside. It's like, how's your Spanish? We need you. So it's like, all right, let's get to work. So it was a lot of fun, definitely kept me on my toes in that sense. So yeah, yesterday was back-to-school night. Once again, great scene, a lot of family and friends. It felt like a little mini reunion, seeing people that I hadn't seen in a really long time, people I went to high school with. I'm seeing their kids now going to high school. So I was like, wait a minute, we're doing this together? Oh, my gosh. So also getting to see the Bright Cafe. My son is doing it again this semester. They are going to be having later on in the year, a gingerbread house contest. And so she's been, going to be reaching out. Ms. Sutton is going to be reaching out to local community members who, you know, see if they want to participate. I'm doing a plug-in for hopefully like Girl Scouts, you know, somebody. They're looking for people to be a part of this all throughout the community. They are going to be having a drive-by lunch. I believe it's going to be in mid-September. It's going to be on Friday, I think, the first, not mid-September, sorry, September 1st, in the middle of the day between 1:00 and 2:00. It's gonna be interesting because I don't know if my son's going to be making any of that and I'm not, I don't know. I don't know. I'm just not sure if he's gonna, if it's gonna be good, if he's gonna do it. No, I'm just kidding. I have faith in Ms. Sutton and her ability to teach my kid independence, towards independence. Lastly, so this weekend was a really big weekend. Of course, it was first week of school. Everything's gonna happen in the first week of school. We just had our first football game and it was away. And that happened on Friday. So there was an incident that occurred on Friday night. So Saturday morning, we're going and we're at the field, at the football soccer field at River City. And there was pretty much fireworks had gone off and there's a hole in our field. So about the size of my hand. There's, there definitely has to be something going on. I'd like to get information on what are we doing to secure our fields? What are we doing to make sure that our locks and gates are properly closed during certain hours of the day? After hours, we have cameras, what's going on? I'm sure it was really great celebration. I mean, it looked like a lot went off. So but we gotta protect, I know humor is my friend, but we have to protect, you know, our investment. And that's also, those are also, is our children's, their field. I mean, we had a game for the Bears the following day. What if this had prevented us being able to play? Because there could have been an incident where a kid may have put their foot in there and tripped and fall. And we want to prevent those things. So I'm sorry, you're not out at eight, but I really tried. But we do need to, if I can get a report of something that how are we, you know, taking care of these types of incidences, that would be great. And maybe something that either we can report out or have in a report, an email. I'd appreciate that.
Be clear, the goal is not to rush anyone. So yes, we can definitely go pass. I was, thank you for that. Vice President Wong.
Yes, just trusty Vanegas. Kickoff was great, great to see. It just, it feels like it's going back to, I'm not gonna say normal, but pre-COVID days to see everybody and the energy and the contagion of energy and joy and excitement, right? Even the kickoff, wonderful presentation from everybody. Felt bad, I was trying to sneak in when WSTA and Doug was speaking, like, Jack, you have to leave. So I'm like, okay, so I left. I also have to note during that time, not just chaos at the sites, I think that was the day when we had, you all had discovered that the heating wasn't working. And so to Doug's point, like kudos to you in the middle of like a kickoff, hearing all of this, getting River City painted, like repainted. And that's tremendous, literally in a day. Like y'all, like you had, like masterful, like they just like, it was like, right, I'm like, what's going on? What's going on? And Dr. Hildreth tells me, but then like to hear that it was fixed in such short order, that that's a tremendous feat from our MOT who was, you know, and you're short-staffed. And so like to like just really pony up for the kids and communities and teachers, both for classified and certified, it was phenomenal. So I don't think, I want to underscore what President Nepp said because it wasn't like, oh, we, it was a week ago. It was a mere hour.
Yeah.
Mere hours by the time you knew and like everybody was on campus. So thank you for that because I don't think we acknowledge folks behind the scenes enough, MOT and classified and whatnot. But that was a tremendous gift and we acknowledge that. But that just really, just like, it was not 24 hours. It was less. And so thank you for that. And yes, same thing with back-to-school night, both at, I miss Yolo's, but really Noah is great, as you indicated from the grand jury report. He knows what he's doing. It's coming to his heart, right? Which makes a whole lot of sense. And just really excited about what's gonna happen at Yolo, at River City. It is amazing to see all the kids you coached sitting there on campus at their, you know, in their student club, like trying to like, I'm like, oh, my gosh, I can't believe you're a junior. I can't believe you're actually a freshman or sophomore or senior. And just like the energy, yes, you always greet the parents, but really the students that we've all grown up with and coached and taught or were Girl Scout troop leaders. It's just amazing to see the humans and the citizenship and the creativity that we have fostered in them. Right? So we all, you know, we're in Southport and our elementary schools would be on the big campus, seeing the community grow together. It was really special.
Thank you. And thank you for being there at the staff kickoff. I know those are things that we're not all there, but our hearts are there at times when our jobs call us away to be. So thank you for being at that. And I'm so thrilled with how this year has, oh, yeah.
One more thing. Sure. Because I'm not just, Farm to Park is.
I'll share that. I'll share that. So getting our kids back to school, huge job, getting to know everyone, the new processes. I know that we have a lot of new staff members as well. We have a lot of new district leaders too. And so it's a really exciting time right now at the beginning. And I want to thank everybody for all the work that goes into it. It's also an exhausting time because when you go from, especially our educators who have an unpaid summer, but when they're, you know, at home doing their thing and then they come to speak all day long, that is exhausting because you're out of practice all summer, having to talk all day long to a large room. So of course, our kids are talking. We're managing. We're not talking at them all day. But it's just a lot of pieces. So I know that this is a really exciting time. It's also a tiring time as we all gear back in with all of our goals to go. And so I want to thank everyone here for all the work that they do to get all of our kids back onto campus. I, 21 years ago, I went to Sly Park for my first time as a student teacher. And I have since taken kids to outdoor ed for years and years and years, one of my favorite things to do. But this is my first year going as a chaperone for Washington Unified School District. So I am really appreciative of the district. We had a couple of schools that could not go last year as sixth graders because Sly Park canceled because of staffing issues. And so I appreciate the district's commitment. This board has voted on it, my favorite vote, to fund Sly Park for all of our sixth graders. And so we have some who are, I will be going with seventh graders, and they are starting the year. And kudos to the educators and the bus drivers and everyone for making a field trip this early in the year where you are gone for five days with chaperones and getting all of our emergency kits. A lot of things to organize right as we come in. So I will be there next week and I am thrilled and excited to take on that role of chaperone for our kids. And then with that, I did want to bring up to give the board just a heads up, I'll be looking at, there might be a possibility I won't be able to go to CSBA this year. So I'll talk to you all about that and update you just because I am taking a priority of this week off to be a chaperone of our kids. So to be continued. I'll talk to you about that. And then I wanted to share, and I think it'll be important maybe in an update for us, is our water filling station, since this board has committed to that, we funded that, but we've had some issues getting it out on the school site rollout. So if that could be communicated to the full board and then we can share when parents ask us as well, what the hiccups are on those processes. And also with that, I'll share, as we get all of our kids back to school, walking, riding bikes, some of course with buses and with parents, that we make sure as community members, we do our part. So the district did a great job quickly painting the crosswalks and doing our part to make sure that kids are safe and can get to school. And I appreciate the parents that brought it to our attention. But also like, for example, my girls and their friends ride their bikes and had a community member say to them, you need to get off the sidewalk. The bike rules. And we said, no, mom and dad's rules are that you are here because we need our kids. Until we have safe bike routes where they're off of a street, then we're going to utilize what we can. And I know we have some areas of our community without sidewalks. And so we want to make sure that we are just being very careful of our kids and making sure that they're being safe because that is a priority for them. And so if our community can, you know, every once in a while, step to the side a little and understand that we want these little bodies and larger bodies all get to school, older kids too, to get to school safely. And I also want to thank all of our PTO organizations, all of our parent volunteers, all that they do as well to roll out this great start of the year. So that takes me then, yes, to West SAC Play. So as you know, I'm a, one of the hats I wear is a founding member and a current board member of West SAC Play, which partners with our city to, our current goal is to get shade at our public parks across the city. And so we have our big fundraiser coming up. It is called Farm to Park. It's our fourth annual that we've done. We do have our culinary students are making food for it. So maybe your kiddo is doing that as well. We have the syncopating sea monkeys that play to open it up. And Jeremy White is a chef who also helps support Cheryl Sutton, who's our teacher, of course, at the culinary program. And so that fundraiser is coming up on September 8th. As a board member, I still buy my tickets. So it is a fundraiser, but if any of you want tickets, we can definitely get those and I'm happy to help connect you. And I also appreciate that we'll have some district swag there too. So thank you for all of that. Okay. So that concludes my comments and takes us into our future board agenda items. Are there any? Okay. I'm gonna share. Then as we talk about next month, rolling into, as Dr. Hildreth spoke to, suicide prevention month, as well as Hispanic Heritage Month, my ask would be that we could possibly do something during that communication celebration times. Trustee Wong has brought that up as well, that we connect that to the resolution time. So if we could have possibly, I'll let the district decide what this looks like, but outreach specialists or social workers sharing maybe some of the supports that we do for suicide prevention month. And then also in the past, we've had our Elkhorn Folklorio students come out and dance. And that might be a great opportunity as well if we highlight them strategically during that month, might be a great opportunity. And then I did also want to share that next month, according to our board governance calendar, we will be sharing some goals of the district. Okay? All right.
Can I add something to that? I believe they have a program or a club over in high school, Comecha. So it is our, well, pretty much Latino-based, Chicano-based legislative type of, and so why not invite them also to come and kind of like participate a little bit since it's kind of like their little mini governing board? Just a thought.
Yeah. I see Stacy Tran nodding. So maybe we'll leave that up to all of you. What's the best fit? That's a great suggestion. Okay. And with that, have a wonderful evening and a wonderful Friday with our guests tomorrow.